Okay, welcome to the public portion of the meeting of the Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment. As Standing Committee, it is our role to review any legislation introduced in the House. We also identify priorities related to economic development and environment in the Northwest Territories. Today's meeting is another segment of public engagement the committee is undertaking to explore ways to support northern businesses in the NWT. Committee has identified priority to seek ways to increase the responsiveness of GNWT policies and services to stimulate and diversify northern and in particular indigenous businesses. Presentation today will contribute to committee work with the intention to make recommendations to GNWT. I would like to remind all members and presenters to direct all questions and comments to myself as Chair and wait to be recognized before speaking to help us run smooth meeting. I will now ask members to introduce themselves for the record, starting on my left.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jackie Jacobson, Emily A. Knight.
Morning, everyone. Rylan Johnson, MLA for Yellowknife.
Good morning. Katrina Knocelby, MLA for Great Slave.
Kevin O'Reilly, Framelake.
Jane Way Allen Armstrong, MLA for Moki.
And we also have the MLA for Tunadee Wellede, newly elected one, Richard Jericon with us and our staff. Thank you all. I'd like to welcome Grand Chief Kikivichak. Please introduce yourself and staff if you have any and proceed with your presentation. Massey.
Hey, Von Greenzy. Good morning, Mr. Chair, along with the other esteemed members of the NWT Legislative Assembly. My name is Ken Kikavichak and I am the Grand Chief of the Gwich'In Tribal Council. It's my honor to be here speaking on behalf of our over thirty-five-hundred participants to our Gwich'In comprehensive land claim agreement, majority of which live here in the Northwest Territories in our communities of Inuvik, Eklavik, Tedleje, otherwise known as Fort McPherson, and Sigaychik. Almost four hundred of our participants reside in the city of Yellowknife and in the towns of Hay River and Fort Smith. Joining me on the call today is our CEO, Tom Uiger, our Manager of Government Affairs, Susan Laramie, and the CEO of our Gwich'In Development Corporation, our business arm, Roya Asmus Jr. I understand we provided an advanced copy of the slide deck. If we could just get that up on the screen and move to Slide 2. While we're doing that, I'd just like to extend congratulations to members Way Allen and Jericon on their recent election to the NWT Legislative Assembly. I'm going to focus our presentation today on speaking to the thoughts and responses on the emerging stronger plan. Through our perspectives, we will also answer some of the specific questions that you have posed to us. Before we start, however, we must say that in the opinion of the Gwich'In Tribal Council, the lands and people of the Northwest Territories are our greatest resources. If we have learned anything from the COVID-19 pandemic, it's that we cannot insulate ourselves from what is happening nationally and globally. More so now than ever, the Gwich'In Tribal Council and the NWT more generally must develop our resources and respective interests so that we can compete globally and develop our regions within an international arena. COVID-19 has shown how integrated we all are within the global economy and the GTC recognizes the need to participate at this level. What we are presenting here today shares our perspective and what we believe to be a need for all of us to think outside of the box and develop new approaches to meet the issues that we face today and in the days, weeks, months, and years to come. If we can move to Slide 3. I will start with the current procurement process, which I think we can all agree is currently impeding our success. We know that it is a priority for this government to create an indigenous procurement policy that we agree is long overdue. Any potential GNWT indigenous procurement policy, however, does not supersede our Gwich'In comprehensive land claim agreement, which is a constitutionally protected document and should work to complement the core GNWT commitments to the Gwich'In in a separate document that meets to achieve the objectives of Chapter 10 of our land claim agreement. To this end, the GNWT should also be planning to review the negotiated contracts policy, which was last updated in 2007. The only mention of the estimated fifty percent indigenous demographic here in the NWT is that nothing in this policy should prejudice any present or future land claim, self-government, or treaty land entitlement agreements. A far cry from the collaboration and working together that the current assembly of the GNWT seeks. There's a level of seemingly arbitrary decision-making and the determination of directly negotiated or sole source contracts that makes us uncomfortable. There's opposition amongst your senior leadership for the adoption of the true spirit and intent of this policy, which is the strategic investment by the GNWT into the various projects that it undertakes in our communities and regions. One must also ask themselves why it must take the Executive Council to make these decisions. Any procurement professional when tendering a major project understands that you can either, one, go for commercial tender, two, directly negotiate with a single firm for commercial considerations, or three, break aspects or scopes down into manageable sections for the local industry. These commercial considerations may include a limitation of supply, a leading proponent with unique skills, experience, and/or value that they could provide to the project. The bottom line is that there should be a contracting strategy developed, especially for the larger projects, rather than the commercial tender or RFP being the strategy. There's not enough of this happening at the GNWT level at the current time, which has anticipated and unanticipated impacts on indigenous business, some of which I explained to your Special Committee on Reconciliation and Indigenous Affairs back in November. There's a disconnect between political commitments and actions. Bureaucrats need to know the overall government strategy for procurement. It also needs to be measured and reported. If the GNWT is using procurement to address community development in the regions and communities, the procurement teams need to know this and it should be part of the development and achievement of the targets. It's not just about the lowest dollar. There's currently no incentivization that we can see for staff to see success with indigenous procurement. I would suggest that established spend targets are developed and compensation of staff for the achievement of these targets, or KPIs as they're called. In our opinion, what gets measured, gets done. If we can move to Slide 4, please. We will not get to where we seek if we do not look after our people. Small and tiny home construction and managed alcohol programs are a potential solution. They must be designed, however, to assist individuals in breaking away from the cycles of abuse and addiction they find themselves in. The focus must be the transition of these people into wellness and then hopefully into the workforce, even if it is part-time and/or seasonal. The Gwich'In Tribal Council has made significant investment in what is known as the Gwich'In Wellness Camp located about fifteen kilometers south of the town of Inuvik here on the east branch of the Mackenzie River. There's further required investment and a partnership opportunity with an indigenous organization to meet the joint needs and requirements of the GNWT and residents of the Beaufort Delta. We have secured almost five million dollars in external funding to upgrade this facility and get the required equipment for operation, which is a multi-purpose facility to provide a range of programming and services in the Beaufort Delta, including those around health and wellness. This is a real opportunity for the GNWT to assist in the provision of these wellness services. This is in addition to the over five million dollars that the GTC has already invested in this facility. On-the-land treatment is what we are seeking to provide for our participants as well as the other residents of the Beaufort Delta. People who are homeless and struggling with addiction should be contributing to our economy, but they are unwell and require support, which we know. You may have heard my concerns around medical travel. There's clearly a need for improved liaison services for non-Yellowknife residents and particularly indigenous and those who have difficulty with medical terminology in the English language. We appreciate some of the early supports, however, that is just early support. Having an indigenous individual come into a hospital room and say hello is a start, but it's certainly not a solution. In our area, we find improved success dealing with the healthcare system in the Yukon, particularly in Whitehorse. Could there be options for us to formalize a level of support for our communities that are connected to the Yukon Medical System via the Dempster Highway to alleviate some of the burden that is clearly overwhelming Yellowknife? More specifically, we have residents and communities such as Fort McPherson who are opting at their own cost to go to Whitehorse and seek medical assessment for conditions that they are suffering with. On one too many occasions, these ailments that are often mired in the hamster wheel of waiting for appointments and medical travel are eventually diagnosed as cancer, requiring chemotherapy, and far too often the diagnosis are made much too late for our people. In essence, we seek the co-development of solutions to create healthier communities with the GNWT and the federal government moving forward to provide the services and support we need. We can move to Slide 5. COVID-19 has highlighted the dependence that many of our workforce who have school-aged children have on our educational system. At times when the medical data was indicating that we should keep the schools closed, there was pressure to reopen as many parents needed to return to work due to childcare limitations. Education needs to be a focus for the GNWT to produce real graduates. We spend too much time and effort upgrading our youth once they quote-unquote "graduate", setting us back a couple of years, and to make it worse, we have to use our own funding at the GTC to fix the GNWT's failures. This is an area for indigenous governments to assist the GNWT in better incentivizing educational attainment and attendance of students at post-secondary or trade institutions through top-up funding. With that said, the current SFA program is insufficient to meet the needs of our indigenous students. We have long stated that the government's commitments under Treaty 11 are not being met by the current program and we have concerns about, at the very least, perceptions of indigenous-focused dollars from the federal government being utilized to fund non-indigenous students in the form of repayable or forgivable loans. We are seeing some success with the Delta-North Alliance, which is a fifty-fifty partnership that we have through the Gwich'In Development Corporation with the Inuvialawit Development Corporation, two indigenous governments working together. What we are finding, however, is impediments to engineering and planning that are making these projects that are on these projects that are making the workforce development and training almost impossible and is not as effective due to a lack of scope of available opportunities that both the Gwich'In Tribal Council and the Inuvialawit Regional Corporation can identify potential training programs and leverage our federal dollars for this work. Workforce development requires longer-term vision and planning, and this can be done by working together collaboratively. Why do we need to learn from jurisdictions such as Norway and Finland in relation to Arctic construction or dealing for dealing with permafrost? It seems we are systematically programmed to think that we must import critical knowledge that we require when I'm a firm believer that this expertise could exist here with some encouragement, support, and most of all, vision. That is what we as leaders are here for. Yes, we inherit the economic cycles we find ourselves in. However, it should not distract us from our real goal, setting up the North for success in the future. We should be at the leading edge here in the NWT for the development of design and engineering to deal with the natural characteristics of this land and region. The Gwich'In Development Corporation is looking to form its own partnership with a national engineering firm to assist in developing our own technical assistance rather than depending upon the GNWT or the federal government to provide it for us. On this note, I would like to highlight the Inuvik Wind Project that we just had a news conference on yesterday. We need more government-funded projects like this in our communities in partnership with organizations such as the GTC. Wind and solar are current opportunities and the timing is now with the hyper-focus of the federal government on their investment in green technologies. We should not also lose sight of the renewable energies such as hydro in areas where there'd be limited or preferably no impact to traditional lands and lifestyles. Run-of-river type operations come to mind here. We can move to Slide 6, please. Furthering on business support, tourism and hospitality have long played second fiddle to the resource base industries in the North. And it's time for that to change. Why is it that we continue to see development of the big-box stores or major franchises in the Yukon prior to seeing it here in the NWT? Our people desire these options, as has been recently evidenced by the new Starbucks and KFC development in Yellowknife. On a local level, we have woodcutters that won't cut wood for the Elder Subsidy Program because it takes as much as sixty to ninety days to receive payment from the GNWT. This is completely unacceptable. Anything longer than thirty days requires an explanation as to why it is taking so long to process. We have NWT businesses and individuals refusing to do work for the GNWT because they cannot afford to spend the time to finance or the cost to finance a territorial government. This needs to change immediately. We are facing this with one of our GDC businesses at the current time, a company by the name of Larga Limited. For the last two years, we have been incurring increased costs in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic. These costs now exceed a half-million dollars. That has taken us over a year now to seek repayment. That has taken us over a year now to seek repayment, and we continue to wait. Payment of, timely payment of invoices is critical for northern business to maintain their cash flows. That should be understood at the GNWT level. Business support should also include having an Economic Development Officer in every community. It is very difficult to do something in a community when you don't have any capacity. There's funding available, but it is minimal, piecemeal, and most communities don't know how to access it. This is important because our small communities get missed in major developments within the region. I also believe that we need to establish a standalone equity investment program that we develop with some seed capital. Look at programs such as the Clarence Campo Development Fund in Saskatchewan that results in new business creation for their MATE clients. A new approach needs to be undertaken, as we seem to have peaked in our ability to spur business growth amongst our indigenous population here in the NWT with the current services. We can move to slide seven. On expanding and diversifying the economy, I have difficulty looking to expand and diversify the economy when we don't have a strong core to build from. We need to look after basics before we get ahead of ourselves. In my mind, what is driving this is the fear the mining industry investment retreating. That is coming in any event because we do not have a pipeline of projects due to the earned reputation of the NWT being a difficult place to conduct business. Our regulatory framework, although very inclusive, and in some points a model for other jurisdictions to follow, especially on points like consultation, is extremely laborious and complex. We all know that we must do better within this system at separating the small-scale, low-impact exploration that creates immediate jobs and economic opportunities at a local level from the major project development, which should require the broad environmental application and detailed assessment. However, even with major project development, for some proponents to take over fifteen years to see their projects permitted is completely unworkable for the private markets. It is fine when we have world-class deposits and proponents, which proponents are after, but it appears that this may be behind us with the Ekadi and Dyivik Diamond Mines in the later stages of their mine life and their best days behind them. Even the Getchukre Diamond Mine has fast-tracked its operations, which is due in part to the very high operating costs here in the NWT. This is the major barrier. Even before the transportation, logistics, heat, and power costs have made the NWT uncompetitive on a global scale, we must invest in our network and infrastructure to see any potential for future growth in this area. In terms of developing a remediation economy, we cannot let the bias persist that our people and businesses cannot continue this work or cannot complete this work. It takes leadership and mandates from government to make this happen. Look at the cleanup work of the Duline Sites in the nineteen nineties and two thousands, where a pan-Arctic group of Inuit companies completed this comprehensive, and at times very technical work required to remediate these legacy sites left largely by the US government. We have an opportunity to hire full-time harvesters in each of our communities. These individuals, when properly equipped, can harvest firewood for elders and those with income limitations for heating of their homes. These individuals, when there are available resources in the area such as moose and caribou, can harvest wild game for food for our residents. In the summer, these individuals can provide fish for our residents and businesses who may require for their operations. When not harvesting, these individuals can undertake brush and willow cutting on trails around our communities to promote the use and transportation. They can assist in the remediation of certain sites, such as abandoned oil and gas sites. Data mapping and improving our database of the state and conditions of our lands. This could also meet the requirements of Section ten dot one dot two to support the traditional Gwich'In economy and individual harvesters while creating an employable skill for the use of our indigenous knowledge, as outlined in our Gwich'In Comprehensive Land Claim Agreement. We just need to scope and create these positions to make them happen. Cutting wood, getting meat, sending food, et cetera, is a Gwich'In approach to community economic development. The solution must come from the Gwich'In and other indigenous governments developing a solution together with the GNWT moving forward. The governments, both federal and territorial, have been the lead on this for over a hundred years, and the Gwich'In and indigenous people at the NWT are further behind now than when we started, and it is time for us to do things for ourselves the way we were taught. As you are aware, the Gwich'In are seeking a self-government agreement for our communities of Aklavik, Anuvik, Teteleje, and Sigeychik. A key objective for us is to develop lands for our citizens and businesses to earn income, and for our potential Gwich'In government businesses to invest in our communities. Through legislation, we can achieve improved economic development that is not unlike what we are seeing in the prairie provinces of Alberta, Saskatchewan, and Manitoba, number treaty territory, just like the NWT, that through the First Nations Land Management Act is beginning to see development and benefit from the creation of what are known as urban reserves through investment by First Nation communities and corporations in the larger centers of Calgary, Edmonton, Saskatoon, Regina, and Winnipeg. We need to evaluate similar arrangements here in the NWT for our First Nations. We can move to slide eight. In closing, I'd just like to say the next few points is that the current economic measures MOU between the GNWT and the GTC is insufficient to meet our requirements. As we stated in our bilateral meeting in January twenty twenty-one, the GTC requires something that, one, provides our businesses, our Gwich'In businesses, with preference in the GNWT contracting process. Two, active support, actively supporting our participation in industry events such as the AME Roundup in Vancouver or the PDAC in Toronto in relation to mining and exploration. Three, develops more timely spend data and the segregation of spend with Gwich'In business. And fourth, an ability for us to escalate when required to the executive cabinet when objectives are not being met by senior staff. As mentioned via email by President Kelly MacLeod of our Neetat Gwich'In Council, who is also our interim Deputy Grand Chief of the GTC, in his note to the NWT Housing Corporation earlier this month, and I am paraphrasing here, we seek collaboration with the GNWT and not the standard reference to the business incentive policy, which hasn't resulted in any measurable success and development for our businesses. The Gwich'In Tribal Council has entered into an Economic Measures MOU with the GNWT that is a better process to use if structured properly. We have found ourselves on a few occasions having to remind the GNWT of its commitments under Chapter Ten of our land claim agreement. It is in the spirit and intent that we seek Gwich'In set-aside opportunities, as recently evidenced by the Anuvik Wind Project. This allows for a collaborative approach between our local Gwich'In councils and our Gwich'In Development Corporation to deliver a quality, cost-effective solution for Canada and the GNWT while utilizing local and indigenous businesses, including those on our Gwich'In business list. The Gwich'In are not opposed to government projects within the Gwich'In settlement area, but we must be engaged in the decision-making process on which projects are being planned and when they will proceed from start to finish. The only way for a Gwich'In economy to be maintained and strengthened is outlined in our land claim agreement. Is for us to be making decisions for ourselves. We cannot continue without collaboration with government outside of a standard commercial process as businesses have suffered and continue to suffer from the unequal playing ground that we currently find ourselves in. We certainly cannot continue with the GNWT using its policies and procedures to divide our region through its contracting and procurement process. We ask that the GNWT in Canada work in collaboration with us to co-develop any plans and strategies for our communities and respect the rights afforded to us through our land claim agreement. I'd also like to say that the GNWT is seeking adoption of the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, or the UN Declaration, as it's called. If accepted, some of what we have proposed here works to achieve Articles Three, Five, Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Three, and Thirty-Two of the UN Declaration. As I have stated numerous times before, I would sooner see us begin to adopt some of these suggestions prior to the adoption of the UN Declaration by the GNWT. If the UN, if the adoption of the UN Declaration does not immediately change how the GNWT does business and treats people in the Northwest Territories, then I would ask, why adopt such legislation at all? As I stated at the onset, the lands and the people of the Northwest Territories are our greatest resource. We must take care of them. In the case of our residents, we must do what we can to combat the harmful intergenerational effects of the Indian residential school system and the present alcohol and drug addiction issues that we face. I fully expect the opioid situation that currently has the Yukon in its grips is only a matter of time before we see something here in the NWT. We can work to combat this through the development of necessary supports and the creation of opportunity for training, skills development, and business creation for our residents. These are just a few of the opportunities that we feel can be pursued in the short term. All of this is highly achievable if we take an approach to work together in true partnership on some of the opportunities I have raised. As I stated earlier, we must, however, think outside of the box to tackle the challenges of the near future. The same type of thinking from the past will not work. We know that much is true. If we could just move to the last slide that I'd like to speak to. I'd like to say Masi for your time, and I look forward to any questions or comments that you may have in relation to our presentation today. Thank you.
Masi, Grand Chief, Kikvichik. We hear what you're saying. Many of us are indigenous, and there's many business-minded people on the committee, and and through that, we were looking for feedback from many indigenous organizations as to what they would like to see in any future procurement policies or guidelines that the government may institute. And that's very important to us. I just wondered if we can ask if it's possible to provide your speaking notes to our committee? And if so, then we can work with our committee clerk. Because there's lots of information in your speaking notes that we don't see in the slides. That would be most helpful to us. Masi.
I could certainly provide that.
All right. Thank you very much. And Masi, for your detailed presentation to us this morning. I will now ask members if they have any questions to this presentation. Ms. Nocoby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Grand Chief for his presentation. I don't know if you could see us while we were listening, but I feel like a bobblehead. I definitely was nodding along to a lot of what you have said. And it's very much a lot of the things that I have heard, both when I was the minister and dealing with the Beaufort Delta, but as well now as a regular member. So, I, yeah, I don't think there was one item that you spoke to that I didn't think was something that we are talking about and we wanted to see as well. My question is around the procurement policy and using the Gwich'In business list that the Gwich'In would be looking to develop. I know there's some concern that, I understand that the indigenous governments and organizations need to be in control of that. However, we do have an obligation to protect the public purse. So I'm wondering if the Grand Chief could speak a bit to how does that list, or how will those businesses be compiled? And what's the rigor or the process that we'll go through for any sort of complaint process or such, so that we're not having to try and deal with people coming to us and saying they can't get on the list? Thank you.
Grand Chief Kikvichik.
First of all, I question why any individuals or businesses would be going to the GNWT to rectify this issue. We have a Gwich'In business list on a website called gwichin.biz, B-I-Z. And there's a listing of businesses that are approximately fifty businesses strong. The issue that is with that list is there are a number of outdated profiles on there. And so what we encourage, we utilize that list as our official business listing. We do recognize that it is outdated and is badly in need of update. So we are currently updating our Gwich'In business policy. And in the time being, we are working with our community-based designated Gwich'In organizations, such as the Neetat Gwich'In Council in Anuvik, the Guchiag Gwich'In Council in Sigeychik, the Tedlit Gwich'In Council in Fort McPherson, and the Eddy Tat Gwich'In Council in Aklavik. We work in collaboration to vet any opportunities that come to our region, government and private industry, such that when we do have requests for approved Gwich'In businesses to be forwarded to proponents such as the government of the Northwest Territories, we are doing that in collaboration. And it's not individuals that are making that determination. We do it for a couple of reasons. One is to ensure that we have a level of benefit coming back to our Gwich'In individuals and businesses through employment or business opportunities. And then behind the scenes, as I mentioned, the Gwich'In business policy earlier, we do have a procedure document that we are currently updating for our staff to vet and determine and validate Gwich'In business ownership and management. Masi.
Masi, Ms. Nocoby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and I'm not saying that they should be coming to us, but people like to always come to us and think we can change everything for everyone. So I do appreciate that there is a process and just being able to be knowledgeable about that so that when those types of situations come up, that we can say there is this process. And it would be great if perhaps you'd be willing to share that with us when it is updated and completed so that we can help you with the communication aspect. I guess the next piece I want to ask is about the relationship with the GNWT and the engineering that you mentioned. I have concerns about engineering projects in the North, and I know there's issues around the Beaufort Delta. We've heard things too about, you know, buildings that were supposed to be open a year ago not being open. So I guess I'm going to look more towards a solution base. What do you see as being a way that the GNWT can improve so that the engineering piece, and I'll stick to that, is better, there's better communications? Do we need to have support engineering-type capacity roles within your organization in order to facilitate that conversation with the GNWT? Or do you just think we can improve communications and that will help us or work? Thank you.
Masi, Grand Chief, Kikvichik.
I think the one improvement opportunity is not to mention the municipal pool in Anuvik, which is a sensitive topic for many residents here right now. I'm just kidding there. But in terms of engineering, it just appears that it's more of a capacity level issue due to the levels of turnover, largely early years of experience that many of the engineers that we are or have been dealing with through our development corporation. There just doesn't appear to be enough in-house knowledge about our operating and building conditions here in the North, and we'd like to see that improved both at the GNWT, but also, as I mentioned, we feel an onus as a Gwich'In Tribal Council, as well as the Gwich'In Development Corporation, to develop our own expertise on how best to construct essential infrastructure and housing, for example, in our communities. We shouldn't be awaiting for a scope and design to come from Ottawa. We should be able to design and build our own homes utilizing local expertise. Some of the ideas that come to mind is, you know, with some of the housing, it really has what is known as a nuclear family in mind, and as many people know, indigenous communities, often the housing is in a non-nuclear family environment where you can have grandparents, parents, children, grandchildren, all residing and co-habitating a single unit. There is need for things such as meat preparation. Could there be specific rooms where people can work on machinery? Skin caribou work with meat rather than having to do that in the kitchen or the living room, for example? So I think these are all things that we could bring to the table to address the unique characteristics of the North that we would like to see raised in terms of experience and capability here in the Northwest Territories.
Masi, for that. We're allowing members two questions in the first round, and I'll just go to the next member, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't actually have any questions, but I appreciate the presentation. Thanks.
All right, Masi Cho, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the presentation from the Grand Chief. You know, what you said there, I guess, is, you know, I understand what's going on there because we run into the same problem. what you said there, I guess, is, you know, I understand what's what's going on there because we run into the same problems in South Slade and this region as well as indigenous businesses. And you know, one thing I guess we don't have as much of a problem is logistics being so close to the south. But one area, I guess, and one thing that I found, I guess, since I've been in government is communication. Like the communication between government and communities, indigenous organization, I think, is wanting. And I'm just wondering, I guess, if you can comment on what what type of communication you have with the GNWT and, you know, do you see it as as something that has to to get better over time? Thank you.
Masi, Grand Chief.
Well, thanks for the question. It absolutely needs to get better. And right now, you know, the status quo is here in Anuvik is we are very dependent on communication with the regional superintendent of the various departments for the GNWT. And oftentimes, we're learning about projects through the procurement website that are occurring in the Gwich'In settlement area, for example. So it definitely needs to improve because there doesn't appear to be a higher level perspective in managing the relationships with governments such as the Gwich'In Tribal Council and the Anuvia Alwet Regional Corporation, as well as the Sato Secretariat for that matter. We did have a regional director here in the Beaufort Delta. But as of 2020, I believe that position has not been staffed here in either Anuvik or Norman Walls. And we have raised that concern. And we would be open to that position in one of either Anuvik or Norman Walls, as long as it's focused on communication and engagement at a senior level with the with the Anuvia Alwet, the Gwich'In, and the Sato. And with that, the protocols of communication need to be adhered to and we think that will assist with that to keep our communication at the appropriate level at both the staffing and the senior official, elected official level. Masi.
Masi for that. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate that response. One area that you talked about was was housing and for the homeless and that's close to my heart. You know, I deal with that in Hay River all the time. And, you know, and I talk to people throughout the territories as well. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, that I see is that, you know, government, you know, has been looking after housing for many, many years and, you know, the funding's not there. You know, we're managed by people who come from the south and, you know, and giving advice and telling us exactly what we need. When I believe that we already know what we need, we know what we need in the communities. When we're spending, you know, a million dollars for a for a single detached home in the territories through housing, I think that's wrong. So do you feel that it's time that that the indigenous organizations and claimant groups start to take over control? Because I think for myself, I think that, you know, we still have to, you know, we still need the GNWT, the feds, and and indigenous groups to to work together, but I think it's up to indigenous peoples to take the lead in our own housing strategies and put housing on the ground. Thank you.
Masi, Mr. Simpson. Grand Chief.
I couldn't agree with you more, Mala Simpson. You know, we we are seeking a more direct relationship with the federal government in this regard. Direct funding is really what we seek and we'd like to see that happen sooner rather than later, but we are also discussing this as part of our agreement on Gwich'In self-government as well, but that's a little longer term. We need to have a plan in place to address the housing situation and the duplex here, a duplex there, and our various communities just isn't going to cut it. We have some upgrades that are direly required, that are in dire need of repair in our communities at the current time, and we must get started. And we got young people that are that are yearning for training opportunities that we can provide by just upgrading our housing stock. So these are opportunities that we appear to just be letting slip at the current time and with, of course, we are limited by funding with the funding, but also, more importantly, a plan in place to spend that funding in a in a cost competitive manner, but also in a strategic manner such that we're not only building homes, we're training our workforce of the future and those individuals will also be operating and maintaining these homes moving forward. So that is our our goal. And we'd like to see that come to fruition at some point in the future.
Masi, Grand Chief. Next, I've got Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Kenny. Just in regards to a timeline that we have for your your healing camp, because we have so many issues up there with our youth and our elders, you know, through the, and our adults, men and women that are dealing with COVID-19, you know, the this, the strain, the depression, everything that goes with it. Is there a timeline that you're thinking of when you're opening up your your healing camp in the Beaufort Delta? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Masi, Mr. Jacobson. Grand Chief.
Thanks for the question, Jackie, and great to great to touch base on this. We're actually going to be undertaking the procurement of a significant amount of equipment this year. And we're going to be, the next time you're up in Anuvik and you're able to drive south on the ice road. We do have a new ice road plowed out to the wellness camp because we're bringing out some biomass furnaces out to the facility later this winter. We do have some solar developments happening there. So we expect all of that to happen this year with some, hopefully some initial programming offered as early as 2023 out there.
Masi, Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that, Kenny. So looking forward to that. I'm really looking forward to that because we do need somewhere that we could help ourselves and help our the people that we serve. And I think what we should be looking at is what you should be looking at, and I'm trying to work with the Inuvial development or Inuvial corporations to get our own people that are able, like a three-person team, to go into the communities and to to sit in, work with, have, I guess, working groups, you know, a week long in regards healing and grief and depression and all this, you know, stuff that and are something to do with our youth too and sport. I look forward to seeing you next time I'm in the delta and going, you know, seeing, hearing what you have to what you have to offer so we could try to work with you to get it done quicker so we could provide service. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Kenny.
Masi, Mr. Jacobson. Grand Chief. I'd like to provide comments on that.
No, I couldn't agree more, Jackie. The the success that we are seeing at the Arctic Indigenous Wellness Foundation there in Yellowknife is a real interesting model to us because it validates that our own people can do this work effectively for our own people. And it is a similar type of approach that we'd like to undertake at the wellness facility where we have our own people providing counseling and services. I will be clear, though, it's not our intent to set up a treatment facility at the Gwich'In Wellness Camp. That is best performed by facilities in the south. And on wellness and particularly addictions treatment, it is our objective to be able to provide detox and aftercare for those that are returning home from a treatment program in the south. So it's very much complementary in nature, but led and delivered by our people, both Gwich'In and Anuvia Alwet, but also other non-indigenous residents of the Beaufort Delta will be welcome at this facility as well.
Masi, Grand Chief. Since there are no further questions from committee members, I have one on the page three on the economy. You mentioned the indigenous procurement policy that comes out of the Emergent Stronger document. I understand that's kind of under review. But you state that it should not supersede the Gwich'In comprehensive land claim agreement. I'm just wondering if you could provide some examples or instances where you believe that to be so, Masi.
Masi, Mr. Chair. Great question. We do understand and we know that the Minister of Finance and ITI is looking to develop an indigenous procurement policy which we would support and actively contribute to the development of. But we see it as a as a generic indigenous procurement policy that would apply to all indigenous business in the NWT. As you are aware, we have modern treaties and other areas that do not have modern treaties. And there's some very specific commitments in those modern treaties around the development of economies in our various regions. And so what we see happening if a indigenous procurement policy is developed is that we would have our MOU, as it's commonly known at the current time. The Cletcho have an infrastructure cooperation agreement. That would be a higher level document that would stipulate specific commitments by the GNWT to the Gwich'In such as communication, for example. Rather than us just bidding through the procurement website on the various opportunities of the GNWT and getting some level of preference. The Gwich'In Tribal Council, being a modern treaty holder, expects to know what the GNWT is planning in our region. And more importantly, there's a level of communication, formalized communication between the Gwich'In Tribal Council and the GNWT such that we can develop some of these Gwich'In set aside opportunities that I mentioned earlier. If we, for example, have a construction firm in one of our smaller communities, why put that out to tender when that small construction firm is bidding against other non-indigenous business primarily in Anuvik, Yellowknife, and perhaps elsewhere? Why do we not engage in a direct discussion such that that work is advanced sooner and is done by Gwich'In business with a direct and open negotiation of that contract such that the local benefits are maximized? And, you know, we've had a couple of examples. One is some pile remediation that happened in the communities. And in the community of Aklavik, that work was being done, flying a crew in from Anuvik. We have contractors in Aklavik that are able to perform that work. In Formicperson, there was some work done at the Natane Lai Territorial Park where we had a Gwich'In business who eventually won the work, doing work into November in the snow on some pads for some tent frames with some collaboration, communication. That work ought to have been done by September at the very latest in the summer work when that particular contractor was had some latent capacity. So just with a bit of communication and timing, I think we can improve upon this. But we do see a broad indigenous procurement policy benefiting the north. But as it relates to specific opportunities in our Gwich'In settlement area, we expect a separate process, agreement, and commitments to kick in as it relates to our work together between the GNWT and the Gwich'In Tribal Council.
Masi for that, Grand Chief. I think that I'll just stop at that for questioning. I think I have another question from Ms. Nalkaby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When the Grand Chief was talking about the sort of expanding their wellness center outside of Anuvik there, and it mentioned the five million dollars that was put up, that the funding that they had secured, but there was more needed from the GNWT? While I know that everybody would love as much money as they possibly could have, what what is sort of the ideal amount of money or that's needed to kind of bring that facility to what the Gwich'In would like to see at the time being? What what kind of an ask would you be looking for? Thank you.
Masi, Ms. Nalkaby. Grand Chief.
Well, our ask is more so in the ongoing programming of the facility. As it currently stands, the Gwich'In have invested over five million dollars into the creation of that facility. In a bit of history, we we moved the funding that we received from our access and benefits agreement from Imperial Oil into this facility anticipating the potential socioeconomic and health and wellness impacts from the proposed Mackenzie Gas Pipeline, which we know did not materialize. So the funding that we received in part went to establish that facility anticipating the the impacts socioeconomically from that development. And so that facility has been dormant since 2015 and on care and maintenance due to high operating costs. Effectively, the Gwich'In Tribal Council at that time could not afford to keep the facility operational, which costed us in excess of a half million dollars a year. With that said, we don't feel that that's an accurate depiction of what it costs to operate that facility. From an operating cost point of view, we do believe that that the operational cost could be reduced for heating and power by at least thirty percent by by performing some modifications such as the biomass furnaces and some new power generation, i.e. solar. Our ask of the GNWT, a lot of our capital right now to upgrade the facility is being provided through federal departments, Indigenous Services and Canor, for example. So our ask for the GNWT is entering into some sort of partnership so that when we do operate the facility in 2023 and beyond, that we can depend upon a level of of funding from the GNWT to plan our programming appropriately. We do not expect the GNWT and the feds to carry the full cost to this. The Gwich'In are prepared and are making an investment, a continued investment in that facility. But we do expect to work in collaboration with the federal and territorial level of government to meet our ongoing operational costs, which we would anticipate, it all depends on the level of programming, but at a baseline, we would think that that it would cost at least three to four hundred thousand dollars a year to operate that facility.
Masi, Grand Chief. Follow-up, Ms. Nalkaby.
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, to me, that seems fairly reasonable as well, too. You know, I'm sure the GNWT is providing services right now that would then somewhat duplicate or become obsolete at the time of the work being done by your facility and therefore maybe we can see some of that money get moved over. I just wanted to come back to the comments around, well, around procurement and engineering and such. I share the the Grand Chief's frustration with the southern style and southern approach to building in the north that has now created tons of structural issues, et cetera, and and the fact that we do need northern people running those projects that do understand how the north operates. I have a concern, and I'm not sure what my question is necessarily, but maybe just more to hear the Grand Chief's thoughts around companies that use businesses in the north and indigenous businesses in the north to gain the bit points and win contracts and therefore then not really following through on the the nature, the the spirit of the agreement. You know, it's cutting that check. And I guess my my question then to the Grand Chief would be what what do you see that we can do or how we can prevent that from happening? Is there, with the way that you're looking to structure your list, is that going to then stop that type of occurrence from happening? Or is it still that area where southern companies can come in and sort of buy the name, so to speak, of of northern companies? Thank you.
Masi, Ms. Nalkaby. Grand Chief.
In my opinion, we curb some of this behavior through proper project management. And if a business has provided northern or indigenous preference, once it's awarded, we shouldn't just wash our hands of it and and hope for the best in terms of a project that's on time and on schedule. It takes ongoing active management. It takes reporting. For some of these businesses, as part of their proposal, they submit commitments around indigenous employment, local employment and business utilization. They must be held to it. For far too often, you have a proposal that's submitted that meets the requirements and expectations of of local government. But during the execution, there's always an excuse for not complying. But more importantly, what I've seen is a lack of management, active management around some of these contracts such as such that we are holding them to some of the commitments they are making in the bidding phase, which in essence are used to to win the work. So I see it as a project management exercise. The development of inclusion plans by those by those companies and their proposals, and like I say, holding them to it in terms of their project execution. And that could factor into some of the mechanisms that are currently at play, such as holdbacks. Do they get paid out their holdbacks if they're not meeting their their indigenous Do they get paid out their holdbacks if they're not meeting their Indigenous employment or procurement or local procurement or employment targets, for example?
Masie for that, Grand Chief. Members, we're reaching the conclusion of our time here with Miss Grand Chief Kikvichak. We want to thank you, Grand Chief, for joining us today. I don't know how much it really meant means to us to listen to Indigenous leaders and organizations and hear from them as we move forward in this. It helps to contribute to our committee work with the intention for our committee to make recommendations to the GNWT. So your presentation is very important to us this morning, and we thank you very much for joining us today. Masie.
Masie, Mr. Chair. Have a good day.
Right. This concludes the public portion of our meeting. We shall wait till we get off air, and then we'll conduct regular committee business. Masie.